Hey, like all the cool.
That was excellent.
Because I knew it was your idea.
Am I right?
She always carries one of those with her.
Oh, she's got. All right, as a teacher, I'm taking away your toys.
We have to. After class.
We have to do.
They're gonna introduce themselves first tonight.
The students. Sorry for that levity, but this is our last meeting before the election, so. Before you introduce those, though, I do have one, one thing I'd like to do first. Okay, although I don't know if I've changed my mind now. As many of you may know and some of you don't know. This is Ellie Alessio's last meeting. On a personal note. Ellie and I go back a while. She has helped me a great deal. She has been moderator of the town, she's been on the school board for many years, many, 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 many years before now.
I, I, I was on the board.
She, yeah, when I came to work, I don't know if you know, I used to be a teacher here. And for some reason, she hired me when she was on the board. But no, I personally, I want to thank you because your counsel to me has been invaluable. And I'm sure I speak for the board, but I want to thank you for all your year's service and filling in when we needed someone to take their seat. And we have a small token of our.
We have to do that. You know I love you guys. Thank you all.
Okay. So now. How about a question?
This evening we have to do are just a few representatives of the Binky School who have demonstrated cares this year. We're recognizing students every week. So this is just a very small sampling of the students we've recognized this year. And I'm gonna ask them just to say their name and what grade they're in, so you can see we're recognizing across grade levels.
I'm Lila and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Cheryl.
I'm Dave and I'm in tenth grade.
I'm Emma and I'm in fifth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Cuffell has your, your certificates. She'll give them to you.
Thank you.
Minutes.
The move. Second. Second.
Discussion? Then why are you looking at me? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Manifest is working its way around. There are no nominations. There are no registrations. Superintendent's report.
I have one item to share this evening. We're very excited to announce that this summer, Sandborne will once again be hosting Columbia University's Teachers College Homegrown Institute for reading. So we will be working on best practices and instruction that apply to reading. This event will run from August 17th to the 20th. It's a very exciting and informative event. As a result of this professional development opportunity, we do need to make a slight adjustment to our academic calendar. The new teacher orientation was scheduled to last two days, but would conflict with our homegrown institute, so we're condensing the training into one day. And it will move from August 20th and 21st to Monday, August 24th. The first day back for all teachers as well as the start day for school will remain the same. Really important to note that we have already, getting one of these homegrown institutes is not easy. Columbia University is a very, very highly sought after international professional development organization. The professional developers who came here to work with our staff last year for writing had such a positive experience that they actually put us up on a higher level for the weeks that you request. So last year, we had the week of 4th of July. So we had to take Thursday off for the 4th of July and we still had 25 people here. As a result of the, how positive the experience was for the professional developers and Dr. Haynes' work with Columbia, they gave us our first choice week, which is the last week before school starts in August. We already have 26 teachers signed up and we've only known for a week. So when you add the administrators and the teachers, we have almost 40 people attending. And it's only been a week that it's been open. And when the week was the week of the 4th, we had 25 people total, including the admin team. The feedback about the professional development last summer from staff was phenomenal. They loved it. So the word is spreading that the professional development is effective and very useful and it is highly researched based. If you have any questions, I'm happy to talk about that. Just give me a call or an email and I'll share information with you about it. So just a reminder that the last day of school this year will be an early release day and it is currently scheduled for Friday, June 12th. As long as we don't have any more snow days or a few more snow days, we'll be all settled. Hey, March is a winter month in New England. Two years in a row out of the last three, our, our voting day got snowed out, so. That's a week away. It's just the warm temperatures are faking us out, folks. So that's it for my report this evening. Thank you.
Information? Could I ask when the graduation date will be set?
The 18th of March. That's the plan. I was just kinda holding out to see if we got some kind of a whiteout over the next few weeks, but I think we're gonna be okay. Yep, thanks for asking.
Committee reports. Policy.
Policy met today and discussed the policies you'll see tonight. The next meeting is April 1st at 4:45.
Lisa.
So excellence in student achievement. Committee did meet tonight, just before our meeting, that, that report will be at a later date. I'm going to report on our meeting from February 12th. My attendance, myself, Ms. Alessio, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Superintendent Ambrose, Dr. Haynes, Mr. Stack, Mr. Dawson, and Ms. Levitt. And before I, before I give my full report, I do want to encourage people to watch the video because we really have robust discussions and it's impossible to encapsulate them and summarize them in a short report. So there really are a lot of, there's really a lot of information on especially the administration's vision of where we're going. And so I, again, I would encourage everyone to view those, those videos if possible. Okay, so on, on February 12th, updates to the portrait of a graduate draft were circulated and discussed. The document will be used to inform curriculum and guide professional development and is intended to complement the definition of student success and provide a more complete picture of students' skill sets. The goal is that it will be used to set expectations at each grade level, guide teachers in providing feedback to parents about their students' strengths and challenges, and help to identify and develop a plan of action for underperformance. Although the document was on the full board's agenda for discussion that night, the committee recommended additional time for review. And that's on our agenda again tonight. Dr. Haynes presented the status of the new grade reporting system development and testing. The district is working with Motivus, which recently met with teacher groups to receive feedback on the software's usability. The prospects are very exciting for information storage and retrieval in a relevant, meaningful way. The goal is to provide an easily accessible narrative to parents, which will generate a conversation with teachers about student performance and ways to reinforce and support their learning. More in-depth information will be made available to, to the committee in April after some March meetings with Motivus yield additional feedback and refinements. Dr. Haynes also presented an outline on the status of math instructional plan. This will be discussed in more detail at an upcoming committee meeting. But a proposed plan includes the goal of providing Algebra I in eighth grade, implementing a new math program that supports this goal, and instituting intervention that monitors progress every six to eight weeks.
Facilities.
I have a comment.
Yep, I'm sure.
The math plan, I read it over since you had sent it to me. And it appears we are returning to a more traditional approach to math instruction that emphasizes fact fluency and mastery of skills. A news article was cited in the plan from 2017 that, about Oyster River's school district's success with a traditional math program called Eureka Math. Eureka uses a traditional discrete math approach, which emphasizes mastery of basic skills and differs from the spiraling integrated math approach we've tried recently. For the record, I, I previously referenced this news article back in 2017 and brought it up at numerous board and EISA meetings following during 2017-18. Past curriculum director, Terrell, presented his integrated math plan in May 17. He acknowledged that both board and parents had concerns about replacing traditional math instruction with a new, a new approach. He argued that integrated math had evidence of success at South Hegan and Phillips Exeter and said we'd be partnering with MIT and reaching, and reaching higher NIH to implement it. EISA again asked him about Oyster River and, and perhaps staying with practices with the evidence of a proven track record. And today I'll note that a comparison of Oyster River and South, South Hegan 11th grade math score shows South Hegan's continue to trend below Oyster River. The reason for this recollection is to remind everyone that we are aware of Oyster River's math program. After repeatedly urging our district to avoid experimenting with our students and look, and instead look at Oyster River's model, it is gratifying to see we may finally be pursuing it. Too many math education experiments over the decades have failed. We are a small district with limited resources. I, I insist we not gamble with four or five years of proficiency decline trying a new approach. Let other districts experiment first. This experience only reaffirms a sentiment many of us hold that when we're called old fashioned or traditional, we take it as a compliment.
Facilities.
Uh, be, before you move on, is this coming up again under new business?
The portrait of a graduate.
Okay, I guess I didn't see it, so sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry, Jim.
Facilities met today at 3:45 PM after, actually 3:49 PM after a tour of the renovations of the middle school entrance and administration offices, the new facility. And I'll have that report at our next school board meeting. And the next facilities meeting is April 1st at 3:45 PM in room 102.
Did I just make a comment?
Yeah.
Chair? I'm asking for permission.
No.
Okay.
Good.
I'm good.
No, I did wanna say that I wanted to mention that I walked through the new middle school main office that's down the hallway. And I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Angel, who's worked really hard to make sure that that came out right. And it really looks way, way better than I thought it would when we started this process. I was shocked at how well proportioned the entrances to the secretary's area, to the principal's office, to the conference room. It really is far better than I thought it would be when we started this process. And just gives me an even better feeling about the work that we're doing to integrate our middle school into the high school facility while still maintaining a sense of a middle school program. Very, very happy with that. So thank you, Mr. Angel. He's worked very hard.
But it's really Mike from Eastern Seaboard Concrete and all the other vendors that were involved in that. And they're really doing an excellent job.
Yeah, I have a second after the meeting. Just stroll through. It's open down there. So you can just take a look.
Finance met Wednesday, February 12th. Meeting began at 3:48 PM. Those attending were Jamie Fitzpatrick, Elektra Alessio, Jim Baker, Matt Angel, and Tom Ambrose. The committee reviewed and approved the minutes of Wednesday, December 18th, 2019. Matt Angel reviewed and explained some of the open items with the committee regarding charges for telephone services and equipment, online subscriptions, dues to organizations, software equipment, reimbursement of funds we expend on behalf of other organizations, plus security locks at various locations. The committee and Matt Angel discussed the consultant that is being used to review the phone system at the high school for integrating the, the middle and high school phone systems. The committee reviewed the revolving fund balances as of January 31st. The special ed fund balance is $239,994.67. The capital improvements fund balance is $147,024.41. And the facilities use fund balance is $193,680.95. The committee reviewed the operating budget reports as of January 31st. The total expenditures excluding health and dental through October, through January 31st are Matt noted that there is just over 8% remaining in the operating budget that is not encumbered or expended, which is where we expected the district to be at this time. He anticipates the remaining to be down to 5% in March and 3% not, not long after that, where he expects it to level off. Matt is changing how the accounting is being done on the revenue side so that when the revenue and expenditure reports are reviewed in conjunction, one can see whether the district will be over or under on the revenue and expenditure projections. Matt hopes to have the next report set up in that manner. There was no public comment. Jim Baker adjourned the meeting at 4:02 PM. The next finance committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 18th at 3:45 PM in room 102 at the high school.
Personnel.
Um, our next meeting is on March 11th at 5:00 PM and we'll be updating job descriptions.
I, I see a couple of committees have scheduled meetings. There's an election on the 10th. Our first meeting will be the 18th.
We discussed that. We penciled it in, but we weren't sure if we'd be canceling it or not.
You know, there could be a new chair. There could be new people on, on, so I.
Wanna postpone that one or?
Well, you know, I, I'll let your chairman of the different committees decide that, but it's something I think you ought to consider as to whether or not you actually have meetings because.
I would not object to skipping a meeting, so. You can complain about your request. I know.
Yeah, no, just something to think about. I'll let the chair.
I know in the past we've done that. We can just postpone it.
I'm just saying, I think, you know, I mean, I could not be here. I mean, I'm not a for election, but as your chair. And who knows who's going to appoint, whoever the next chair is, me or otherwise, other people may be on different committees.
Okay.
So whatever your committee people want to do, but just I want to keep that in mind. Okay, Erin, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing okay. You, you got a report for us?
Yeah.
All right.
So the week before break, we had our winter carnival and the seniors lost.
Oh.
Yeah.
What?
The seniors came in second. The juniors came in first, sophomores third, and freshmen last. So that wasn't great.
How did the penny jar work?
Okay, that's my next thing. That went really, really well. In the end, we raised over $1,700.
Really?
Yeah, it went so well. And that's all gonna be donated to the Red Cross.
Good job.
He's awesome. Who won? Pretty over in the corner.
The seniors won the penny jars, if that means anything. And we got to pine Miss Bober in the face.
Erin, someone in the corner thought the results of who came in first was pretty good.
Yeah, probably the junior.
There's a drama production coming up, right?
Uh, yeah, Legally Blonde, that's the weekend of the 14th and 15th, I think.
How much did it personally cost you to try to take penny points away from the other classes?
I didn't put too much in, probably like $30 or $40.
Not too much.
I have some friends that put like a 50 in each of the jars.
Wow.
Yeah, we were really committed.
My wife doesn't give me $30 for my allowance every year.
I really wanted to win.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, that's, that's, that's great. Okay, first public comment. Now you know there's somebody out there. As soon as I move on, somebody stands up. I thought that was him standing. Okay. Overnight field trip, Tom.
Oh, great. Um, so overnight, uh, field trip is to Springfield, Mass. It's the annual Key Club District Educational Conference. This is an annual overnight field trip. I did not require Mr. Stack to stay this evening because I didn't think it was necessary. It's no different than anything.
I stopped if his son has a band.
Yeah, yeah, his son has a, a, a band concert this evening. So I just wanted to answer any questions if I can. The Key Club advisors are Mrs. Wheeler and Mrs. Black. And this is the, the annual trip that they go on. So we just need board approval to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Thank you.
When it's not overseas.
Not overseas. That's a different story.
Yes.
Thank you.
How about the policy, Chris?
So I have a motion to read first. I move that we approve revised policies, BGC, B, uh, JBAA-A and JLF as amended, and adopt new policies, GBEAB, JLFCA and JLDBB as first and second reads tonight.
Second.
Discussion.
So tonight, for the first one, I'll take them one at a time. The policy review and ma, and evaluation policy. We're on a fairly rigid cycle right now where we, we evaluate, we're supposed to review policies according to letter groupings, which seem suboptimal to me since policies come about, they become obsolete, there's new legislation passed. So to, to increase our flexibility, we suggest adopting the current School Board Association language. And at our board, policy meeting tonight, we recommended, after discussion, striking the second paragraph of the draft, which shows, says the board will evaluate how policies have been executed. The superintendent indicates that that's really his job. And the third paragraph covers that anyway. The superintendent gives, is giving continuing responsibility to call to the board's attention all policies that are out of date or appear to need revision. So we felt that third, the third paragraph covers the second. And that was the only change that we suggest. Yep.
That doesn't preclude the school board from giving input going forward, though.
All, all policies have to be approved by the board. They are school board policies.
So, ma'am, chair.
I was, that was supposed to be kind of funny. Sorry.
Do you want to amend your, will there be other amendments?
So are there any other comments on this policy?
Is that language that you're striking from language that's in the Hampshire School Board Association version?
It is.
So the recommended language that we're striking that?
We feel we perfected the policy language. So.
Okay.
We'll pass that on to the association.
I'm sorry, did you have a motion to accept that?
Well, I, I move to accept all of them.
Doing them all at once, Pete.
Okay, I do them all at once, okay.
And let me go to the next one. Hold on. The next one is GBEAB. We also looked at that one tonight in the draft we forwarded. We have some other recommended changes. Not very much, though. Mr. Fitzpatrick recommended that reports concerning credential violations or alleged credential violations and other violations of the code of conduct by employees be forwarded to the school board chair as well as to the, the DOE office. And so we added under 2B, Jamie. If a person who was subject to an alleged misconduct is superintendent, that report shall be go to the Director of Academics, Professional Learning, and Student Affairs, who will be given authority to consult with the attorney and will inform the school board chair in writing.
So we, can I comment?
So hopefully that would satisfy your.
And so what was suggested has been edited. So I put in the, you should re, uh, report to the school board chair for review with the school board. The superintendent would be the employee of the entire school board. And I would think that if there's something being said about the school board, then it would be incumbent upon the chair to inform the board itself.
You have to be careful because in situations like this, the board, including possibly the chair, could be the adjudicators. So it's usually best if the board doesn't really know anything until it's time to present it to the board. And then we have adjudication, let's say it. So if the chair then gives information to the board, they may be predisposed as far as what decisions they make. So in situations like this, usually the board, when I say has, has lack of knowledge, so they can fairly adjudicate. Otherwise, if you were given information, the argument could be made that you are predisposed, you've got the information. So this is really for reporting and it's only if it's a superintendent so that you're, you're clean and green. So for the chair to then give you information, I think could be a real problem down the road.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't accept it. I, from my perspective, the superintendent is the employee of the school board. If there is an issue with an employee, the employee supervisor should be aware of what the issue is and it should be brought to that supervisor.
And, and, and I, and I see your argument there too. I mean, there is no right or wrong. I'm just thinking that if I wanted to defend this, I would rather defend that you people are clean and green and you're going into the adjudication with not even a hint of a possible predisposed decision.
And, and so I'll give you the, the counterpoint, present company excluded, of course. Should something like this come to be, then you could have a chair who's working in tandem with the superintendent that buries it.
They, they, they're both arguments are legitimate. I mean, there's, there's no right or.
So let me, let me help you guys with this. I don't have a problem with this because I'm not worried about it. But I think that you would, it would be a mistake to require the board chair to notify the board, and this is the reason why. If the board, if someone made an accusation against the superintendent that they had an ethics violation and the board is notified of it, the superintendent could sue the school board for defamation. Because until you're guilty of the ethics violation, there could be an argument that there's an irreparable damage to the relationship between the superintendent and the school board because they were told of an allegation. So when it gets to the point, if this, the ethics law is pretty strict. And if it gets to the point where you need to know about it, it's bad. Like the, the state Department of Education would pull the superintendent's credentials if they found it to be true. It really isn't about, the ethics violations are not about you as a board. It's about credentialing. And if the superintendent were to lose their license, there wouldn't be a discussion. They wouldn't be working here. So I just want to be really clear that, that there's two modalities here that go on. One is that Patty's required by law, not Patty, but the person in the seat that Patty currently holds, to notify the state of the ethics violation. And the state is supposed to investigate and determine. The school board really has no jurisdiction over that because someone can make an allegation against someone at any time. So the defamation of, of character or the relationship piece is what my concern would be if the board votes to make it that the chair has to notify the board of an allegation. Now, I do think that it's appropriate for the board to be aware of a confirmed incident that has been investigated, but you would have to be aware because the certification would get revoked. Which is why we discussed at the policy committee that you can't, if a teacher has an allegation against them, that's for me to handle. You would know about it if they resign or lose their certification. But that can't go to the school board because it's not, it doesn't go to that level. Teacher level, um, concerns or staff level concerns, this really only pertains to me or the superintendency. But I want to caution you that, that there's a bound. But I want to caution you that, that there's a boundary there that you want to be very careful of. Is that accurate, Pete? Yeah?
Can I clarify something, too, on that? This is an administrative law procedure, and you got to be careful about not polluting the, the judicial aspect of the school board, where they're going to be acting as a, essentially judge in, in a hearing against the, um, superintendent. So you don't want to have, uh, some type of, um, information that, um, that pollutes that, um, mental capacity that you have to act as, um, judge.
There's an argument that Pete shouldn't even know about it until it's been confirmed, that Patty turns it in.
Here, here's my concern. So I hear the argument that, okay, you might have to be the judicial here, but I also just heard the argument from Tom that it goes up to the state, the state does the administration, the state decides. So if the state's deciding from an investigation, then we're not the judicial, the state is.
However.
It's not.
No, no, however, that's for the license. He could still be sitting in that position. And just because that you may, your judicial position may be polluted, may make it more difficult for you to remove the superintendent from that position.
I have, I've sat in a situation some like that a number of years back. And what happened was, there was a, a, the school board had its own attorney that guided them through the process and were allowed to learn as much or not depending on where the judic- the judi- judicial board was going to go. Um, but it, we, we really did have our own attorney that guided the board through the process to protect its sovereign rights and, because the board represents the district.
Correct.
So, and that's why you're absolutely correct, but it's, and it's one of those slippery slope things. But the best way to do it, I, I liked the way we did it back then because we had our own attorney, separate from whatever the superintendent at the time had, and we went forward from there. So that really worked out quite well. Preserve the rights of the board and the responsibilities of the board and the, and the rights of the district as well. Really worked out pretty good. But that was just one situation, and this, this was a while back.
I think it's very important that we don't look at this board and say, oh, there's no problem with that. You don't, our decisions now tie future boards and make up those boards could be whatever.
Probably understood.
So, so we have to kind of put ourselves out forward and really prepare ourselves for worst case scenario.
And, and to me, so Ellie's suggestion makes sense to me, um, of the school board preserving their, their sovereign rights by having it reported and having a, a school board lawyer involved to protect the school board's interest. Ultimately, it's the school board's employee that's being alleged against and, and it's being sent to the state. And I, just doesn't sit well with me that the state is investigating a situation that the, the incumbent authority is being kept in the dark on. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it negates our responsibility. I think the state looks at the credentialation, credentialing.
We, we.
That would not take away our authority to say, okay, state, you found whatever. Thank you very much for your information. Now, as a board, we have some decisions to make.
Because there's two tracks here, Jamie. We could not take away a superintendent's licensing. Only the state Department of Education can do that.
Correct.
However, we could, we could, we as a board could find the superintendent guilty of some kind of ethical violation according to our policies and procedures and fire him or her. Would not have anything to do with their accreditation. That would be up to the state to do. That's why it's two different.
How would we know that? If, if these, if these, uh, items aren't in here that I'm identifying, how would we know that? The state does the investigation, they decide we're not going to pursue it. How do we know it? We don't, we don't know anything.
Jamie, I know that you're organically skeptical.
Yeah?
I, I.
That's correct.
I have to tell you that, that if you're, if the board is considering, you need to consult a lawyer because I cannot in good conscience sit here and advise you to mandate through policy that you would know that because it would be against your best interests. So I, this is serious. So I know it's not about me, I don't care. Okay, I want to be clear. Because if we were having this conversation with me, bye-bye. Right? But there are people that I, I can think of specific cases that I'm not going to cite right now where you would have to have this conversation. One track is evaluation of the superintendent and breach of contract. The other track is about certification. This policy only pertains to certification, and that's not your jurisdiction. So I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, so we can see the.
Timberland's going to this now.
Oh, the other way.
I understand that there be one that employees with any suspicion, um, are handled by school building, um, principals and the superintendent. But when it comes to the superintendent, him or herself, it seems we may want to add, I really like what Jamie's saying here, we might, might want to add a sentence such as, "The district's attorney will keep the school board chair updated as appropriate or if appropriate." And that way, we have something in there that we'd like to be informed or we'd like to have our school board chair informed by the attorney. Um, but it's really the attorney's call since he knows the, the regulations governing this.
I, I, I just, I'm going to say this again. If we need to table this policy and get legal advice, we should. This is not the school board's jurisdiction. I can't say that clearly enough. This policy pertains to the ethical violations and the state's credentialing, not the evaluation of the superintendent. Do not mix the two.
If I'm mixing them, then maybe we should be changing the title. Because it's not what the title says this policy is. The title says mandatory Code of Conduct reporting for all employees.
Which is in regard to the con- the Code of Ethics for credentialing for the state, the New Hampshire Department of Education.
But right after point two, it says additionally, if the covered individual is also a credentialed holder, so meaning some of the covered individuals are not credentialed holders. So it can't just be about credentialed holders.
I think you should pull this one out and, and, and give it some more thought. I think that's the best way to do it.
I, I will continue to be on record that I am not advising you to be notified of these things. Just take that under advisement regardless of how we go.
I agree with you.
Understood.
I, I understand because I.
I'm just trying to help you out.
I agree with you, but maybe my colleagues need more time to, so that's, that's huge. Because we've, we've learned as a board that the only person we can hire as far as a superintendent.
That's right.
So it's pretty hard to say, well, we, we get to be in the dark if someone else is pulling his or her credentials.
Right.
And that's what we are telling the board that needs to do. I understand it and I'd go along with it.
I know.
By the same token, I think maybe time to digest would be appropriate.
And we can, Pam and I can get some feedback and I just don't want you guys to get into a mess. That's all I'm trying to help you with.
I, I agree, so we can suspend.
Understood.
It's really hard. Yep.
So let's make a motion to table that.
Table GBEAB.
Let's finish with it because actually I'm.
There was one final.
There's one other one.
Change that, um, Mr. Dawson recommended under E. The superintendent shall report alleged misconduct since this is in process.
Yeah.
And we thought that was a nice change.
Yeah, I thought that was a good idea.
So we'll table this one. Um, next one is JB triple A.
Double A.
Double, triple. This one seems to be a no-brainer. They're just modifying contact information for sexual harassment cases.
And allows a superintendent updated as needed. Names changed, for example.
So are there any questions about that? And let's see what else. JL CFA, feminine hygiene products. This is a new policy, self-explanatory, and it is required by SRA. So any questions about that? Suicide prevention and response.
We did, Jamie asked a great question, why July 1st.
Oh, yeah, why July 1st was the only question.
The reason is that there's a lot of processes and procedures that need to be put into place, and we need time to put them into place. It's a big change. Thank you for asking.
I wasn't sure, it just seemed odd we're going to change.
It is.
But we're not, but it's not important enough to do right now.
Right, exactly. No, no, thank you for asking. I'm glad.
Which is why they're delaying it.
Yeah.
Because we need response plan first.
It's a very big unfunded mandate. Patty's nodding her head in the background.
We, we need more of those.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, which are illegal, by the way, but that's, but it doesn't matter according to the state of the region.
You can see why I don't trust the state of New Hampshire from the last one.
I get it, I totally get it.
So we need a motion to approve except for GBEAB.
We've got one last one. It's reporting suspected child abuse or neglect. This is revised, is required, um, by state law. And we are revising our language by adopting the School Board Association's language. These are the types of policies that we really should not be modifying because there's specific regulations governing these policies. I didn't see anything that we wanted to change. Forward, no, we had nothing that we recommended to change on this.
So the only, the only comment I had on this is, this is, this puts teachers in a very precarious, very precarious situation.
Well, I said that at the last meeting, so.
Yeah, so I mean.
No need to bounce the rubble here. All right?
The, the, we shouldn't have any, what I'm asking is, is there anything in this that isn't required by law?
Not that we know of. Will has done a very extensive rewrite of this policy, and it cites the law regularly in the policy. It's important to note that, that this doesn't just put teachers in a difficult position, which it does. You all, community members, are mandated reporters already.
Yeah.
And so all it does is make explicit what people may not know as citizens, which is that the same, this policy could theoretically apply to everyone in our state.
You could be a Walmart seeing somebody hitting a kid or beating a kid, and if you don't report it, you're in a jam.
Yep.
You know, we might want to have a workshop or an online, um, tutorial just for everyone in our community.
We, we actually had DCYF come to the school, but we could talk, look at a, a video or a, um, yes.
Set that up for everyone.
Suicide, suicide prevention, too, could be covered.
Yep.
They're both very, very closely related.
So you want to formulate this?
I have one more, please.
Jamie's got one more question.
So on, going back to suicide prevention, it's such a typo, I believe. Um, I just got to find it again.
Oh, that was a such.
Such, yeah.
Yeah, we fixed that, yeah.
Oh, sorry about that.
Thanks, Jamie. Okay, so long as you caught it.
Yeah, it was just a typo, so we.
That's what it looked like.
Is it J? Yes, we corrected that. Such other provisions, so we corrected that typo. Thank you. So we have a motion to approve all policies while tabling, uh, the reporting for mandatory Code of Conduct reporting.
It should be our policies as amended because we amended some of them.
We did.
Except for GBEAB, which we were tabling for, till the next meeting, or for now.
Hold up on that one second. I'm looking at Phyllis who's diligently writing. Did you get the way she w- waited it? All right. So we're going to make that, if it's all right with you, Pam, we're going to make that Ellie's motion.
amended motion, yes.
Yeah, we're amending the original motion that we adopt the policies as amended with the exception of GBEAB, which is being tabled.
Pam, you seconding it?
I'll second. All in favor? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pam.
And you've got the tabling of that one, right? Okay. Did you just hit lock? Patty, you're the next contestant on The Price is Right. Do I like that show so much?
No, I love that show.
Come on down.
It's a good show.
This is a portrait of a graduate, I think you all have.
Everybody should have a copy of this. We discussed it earlier this evening at ISA. And what we did based on the last meeting and the suggestions that were made is we pretty much put together, um, the definition of student success with the, uh, portrait of a graduate together into one document. And in the center, we see that this is going to help us, um, produce college and career-ready productive citizens. I just want to read the ti- the, uh, caption at the top of the page. It says, "The Sandborne Regional School District is proud to share a comprehensive profile of graduate success. This document describes the attributes and skills that students will possess and demonstrate upon completion of a pre-K through 12 education in the Sandborne Regional School District. This profile is comprised of the portrait of a graduate, which supports students in their achievement of the definition of student success. Students who possess and demonstrate these attributes and skills are determined to be career and college-ready." So based on the feedback from last time to figure out how to get these two, um, pieces together into one document, this is what we've put together. We did discuss this quite a bit at ISA today and, uh, came away from that committee meeting, and the committee members can discuss this more at length with the rest of the board, um, with the proposal that this would be our draft 1.0 because we do need a working document, um, for our teachers to begin work on laying out some of the progressions and learning trajectories of what our students would be, um, showing at different age and grade levels. So kindergarten first grader would show different, um, qualities of the portrait of a graduate than they would be in 11th or 12th grade. Also, it's important to note that starting next year, we are going to be going into our NEASC accreditation. And one of the pieces of the district accreditation through NEASC is having a portrait or a vision of a graduate. So by approving this, we would be already one step toward having, um, some of the work of the accreditation done. Uh, with that, Chair Broderick, I turn it back over to you.
Okay, um, just one question, uh, one question. It always starts with one. Who, you said we, who, who, who are the we?
Okay, yeah, thank you for, for pointing that out. So this is a process that we started last May, and we had, we being me and, um, Brian Stack, we had had several subcommittees come together, different stakeholders. So we had business professionals from the, uh, towns of Kingston and Newton meet and discuss what they would like to see come out of a graduate. We spoke to teachers. We spoke to students from the elementary, middle, and high school. We spoke to parents, and we spoke to the ISA Subcommittee last year, um, to give input to develop the qualities. And then from there, we had a subcommittee meeting, a cross-section come together in August, which developed our first draft. And from there, we've had multiple drafts presented to ISA, back and forth to the board, edits, revisions, um, what have you. And this is where we are today. So thank you for that question.
So I guess, can I just call this a community-involved?
Yes.
Portrait of a graduate.
Yes, this was, this was definitely, I mean, everybody who would be, who would, who would have some sort of investment in our graduates had a voice in this.
Okay, any questions to Doc?
I'm going to move that we adopt Portrait of a Graduate 1.0.
Second.
It is, is the reason, we're laughing because those of us at ISA Committee.
No, no, you're, you're, you're right.
We know this is a working document.
I think we call it a living document.
A living document, thank you, it is. And it was seconded by Pam, the Chairman of ISA.
Get that, Pam?
Pam.
Pam, excuse me, I'm sorry. It was Pam, I apologize.
Discussion.
The discussion is, the, the next step would be to take this document and work with its staff and implement different sections. Both, Pam had submitted some questions, as did Jamie, a member of the committee. We talked at length about it earlier today, an excellent discussion. But we need to start implementing the portrait of a graduate. And there's different, different grade levels, they're going to have different interpretations. So in order to, to have this living, working document part of the process of education at Sandborne, we need to adopt this and start implementing it. And we may be massaging it as we move forward.
For the discussion. Oops.
I'll give, I'll give my comments from the, from the ISA meeting for the benefit of those that weren't there. So, um, the grouping of them together, I like that, it's kind of like a book. You know, you get the left-hand side, the right-hand side, the right-hand side is the, these are the content, these are academics, this is the mastery that's required, this is the hard skills, if you will. Uh, the left side is the soft side. Um, my concern was, and I talked a, a bit about, you could take any one of these, the way they're written, and theoretically take it down a rat hole that's not designed to be, um, and, and that sent some things in that also pointed out some of those possibilities. And, and that sent some things in that also pointed out some of those possibilities, which is not the intent. So, the question became 1.0 or something else was, these on the left-hand side, really, if there is a, a good, solid teacher would be using these and directing their activities of these Portrait of a Graduate aspects to get to the hard results on the right-hand side. And then going back and forth as to how do you keep it from a rat hole, one of the suggestions was, as a working document, the next step would be, how would a parent or a teacher decide how they're going to be grading that? What is the level of proficiency on that? So, for example, on the resilient learner, I, I kept on getting hung up, hung up on asks for help. If all somebody does is asks for help, that's not a resilient learner, that's somebody that's becoming dependent. You don't want that. On the other hand, you want somebody that's capable and not afraid of asking for help if they've already started that process. So, I could wordsmith this 600 different times and still criticize whatever I came up with. But the reality is, how do we make sure we don't end up going down rat holes that aren't appropriate for us to be going down as a district? And that's really would be the next level down. So, we talked about going to a 1.0. So, we could get the next level down from the teachers as to how would they, how would this portray itself K to 2, 3 to 5, 9 to 12? How, how would that be different? What would that look like? So, anyways, that was part of the discussion.
Could I just add to that because I was part of this meeting?
Oh, okay.
I wish I had my.
All right, anyway, no, I think this, this, this conversation had a, it was really good because Pam had sent some really, Dr. Brown had sent some really good feedback to me prior to the meeting. And, and so, for an example, she said, "Under a responsible individual who", she, she felt like we should change it to say, "Completes workplace and community comments with honesty, integrity, and professionalism." I don't have a problem with the language that Dr. Brown proposed for a high school student. But what the committee discussed was that that would be part of the feedback that we would give to the people creating the rubrics. So, what the plan is, is for the, the portrait of a graduate to be given to the staff and ask them to come up with, in each area, what a, a meets expectation or a three would be at, for each of these at their grade levels. So, the language that Pam proposed would make a lot of sense for high school students for a three, but it might not work for kindergarten. And we want the teachers to have the opportunity to do that and then have a conversation about what that looks like. You know, Pam also gave some great feedback about an engaged citizen. She was talking about the word respectfully. And we discussed whether or not respectfully should stay in there because it's kind of open to interpretation. And the ISA Committee agreed that we should leave it in there for now and see how the teachers put that into practice when they create their, their rubrics for consideration with an awareness that this is 1.0. They might get into it and we may change it the way that Dr. Brown suggested. It's not off the table. It's just we want the teachers to give us the feedback and do the work instead of us telling them what to do. Like, I, I really don't, I, I like the teachers to, to tell us what's really gonna work on the, on the ground level. So, I think that the community gave us their feedback. I'm asking, and Patty is asking, that the board approve this for now so that we can get the teachers working, get their feedback. And this will be a process of revision throughout next year. And one suggestion that I made was that the ISA Committee have a teacher from each grade level on the committee next year to give feedback about this. So that we had teachers involved in the process throughout the school year.
Well, some of the traits are a little subjective, such as empathy under a responsible individual who acts with empathy. And I was just concerned about that. I would prefer acts with integrity, honesty, and professionalism. And even a third grader can be professional. So, I feel like empathy tends to be a loaded word. Add the word humor in and then you'll understand what I mean. I mean, people's idea of humor differs greatly. When I was in grad school, I was having difficulty with my courses. And I was a little sulky. And my late husband said, "Well, if you don't do it, it's not gonna happen." Now, that was very unempathetic of him. But I needed to hear that, you see? So, empathy to me, it's a little bit of a loaded word and I'm just concerned about keeping this as objective as possible when we, you know, approve this document. If we really need this for accreditation, I would rather just slap Portrait of a Graduate on our current student success framework and see more. This feels a little bit like we have to pass the plan to see what's in it. I'm concerned about that. I know there's been a lot of work done on this. And I want to thank everyone for the work they've done. I have some notes here, I'll read quickly. I have too many unaddressed concerns to support at this time. I have expressed the concerns to leadership. My detailed questions have been considered a bit too detailed for responses at this time. On the other hand, I understand this document will be our North Star, providing a foundation for revising our entire strategic plan. I think I deserve answers to most of my questions before agreeing to it. Teaching non-academic social skills along with academic is uncharted territory. I am concerned about speech codes as some universities now have. And the usurpation of what has traditionally been left to parental oversight. The work I've read on this new paradigm of dealing with unruly students by avoiding discipline and avoiding punishment and having people get together, victims, and dealing with it in a restorative way is, again, something that is, I not really, I'm not really sold on it. I am not exaggerating when I say what I've read. This proposes to jettison appropriate punishment for student misconduct or a lot of punishment, saying that that punishment only contributes to the education-prison pipeline. Actually, this, one of the books says, "It actually, when you punish, it actually teaches bullying and has no place in modern education." I think appropriate disciplinary responses teach defiant young people the need to respect property rights and follow rules no matter how arbitrary those may seem. Dr. Green, a consultant hired by our district, supports this paradigm saying, quote, "Students want to learn, not get in trouble." Well, actually, some don't relish learning to the levels we expect. Learning is not always fun. It's just like a job, it's work and has negative aspects. It's often boring, but it's necessary. And much misconduct is routine negotiation or a process of testing adults. If you want to enable that and just eliminate any consequences, the notion that discipline is a source of behavioral problems ignores another potential source of juvenile misconduct we've seen escalate in recent years. I'm just gonna say this because it's important. The explosion of fatherless households which followed incentives provided by federal programs starting in the 60s. So, we already have a character and citizenship education policy, policy IHAK. That along with our student success framework suffices for now. I'm urging the board to table this portrait at this time and with a no vote. A no vote is not intended to table this with finality but to pause until further information is available, especially from districts which have introduced and have embedded non-academic assessment into their programming for several years. And thank you for allowing me to make my statement.
Yeah, I, I, I gotta tell you, I, I was very close to, to, I, I don't, I couldn't see the connection.
We'll get you on by nine, don't worry about it.
You know, okay, I was gonna suggest we just move the motion. Make a motion to accept this.
I just want to say, with all due respect, I, I disagree with my colleague and ask the board to endorse Portrait of a Graduate.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Yes. It's, they've already a motion.
It's already motioned. Okay, I, I.
There's a motion on the floor, it's been moved and seconded.
You left me out there somewhere, a microbe.
It's okay. Because you have my job.
Any further discussion?
I'd just, I'll just have a comment. So, I appreciate Dr. Brown's comments. You can see other people maybe don't. She is a doctor of education. She studies this information very deeply. She, she is earnest in what she's saying and, and I appreciate that. I, I will, however, vote in favor of it, but I do appreciate what you are bringing to the table. I think it is relevant. I do think there are concerns. Some of the things you've identified are some of the rat holes I'm concerned about. So, certainly it would be worth watching, but I do appreciate your comments and the research that you do. Thank you.
Go for the comment, all in favor?
Yeah, I, I don't think we'll ever have a perfect document. It's, it's words, how it's interpreted and, and how it's, how the, the standards of, of grading on these different levels, how they're gonna be implemented. That's kind of how you're gonna fill in the blanks. So, I, I think it's probably, we've taken it about as far as we can at this level. So, I'm gonna vote to approve it.
All in favor? Post? Yeah, post?
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Heinz.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Second public comment. I know there's somebody out there. Hey, here we go. Other business, next meeting agenda, announcements, here we go. The next Sandborne Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, May, March 18th, 2020, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM in the library at the Sandborne Regional High School, 17 Danville Road, Kingston, New Hampshire. The second voting session for the annual school district meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 10th, 2020, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the Swayze Gymnasium, Sandborne Seminary Campus down the street for Kingston voters and in the Newton Town Hall for Newton voters from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. There are no non-publics, am I correct? So, I'm gonna exercise my chairman's authority and say.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much.